Welcome everyone to the Lower Moreland Township Board of Commissioners, December 10th, 2024 stated and monthly and also advertised meeting. It's December, the entire board want to wish you a very happy holiday and happy new year. We hope it's peaceful and we thank you for coming out tonight. Please rise from the pledge of allegiance. Before we start, I just want to go over some meeting rules of conduct. When addressing the board, we have a podium at the front of the room. If you are able to and you can, can you please come up, state your name and address for the board as clearly as possible? We thank you for that. Please address the board as we take each item, agenda item. And we have a lengthy one tonight, an aided X. If you would like to address the board regarding another topic, that would fall under our non-agenda items at the end of the evening. We welcome the town, your, your resident and community input this evening. In the interest of everyone's time, this is a business meeting and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Solicitor Rice and Solicitor Hauser usually help me with the tone, so I'll thank them in advance. I'm sorry, I just upgraded you, Assistant Commissioner Hauser. Also, um, thank you very much and please be respectful and kind. Before we start with our committees, I would like to make mention that our Vice President and Commissioner and Chair of Public Safety Joe Canelli was recognized at the Bryn Athan Fireman's banquet on November 16th for his devoted service to fire NEMS in our communities. So I'd like to congratulate Joe.
Thank you.
Vice President Commissioner Canelli is online with us this evening. Hello, Joe. As Chair, I'm going to recognize you as Public Safety.
Thank you very much. I wish I was there in attendance with you guys this evening. My first item on my agenda is the LMPD Sergeant and Corporal Promotion. Lieutenant Haddock's recent promotion created vacancy in the Sergeant's rank. The Sergeant list certified by the Civil Service Commission on January 30th, 2024 remains valid, so the board can promote from the list. Chief Smith is recommending Corporal Kevin Inman to be promoted Sergeant. Dressing the Sergeant vacancy then leaves the vacancy in the Corporal rank. The Corporal list was also certified by the Civil Service Commission on January 30th, 2024. Chief Smith is recommending Officer Anthony Perronase to be, to be promoted to Corporal. District Judge Tom Mert will be in attendance tonight to swear in the Sergeant Inman and Corporal Perronase. Is there any discussion from the board? Anything from those in attendance who are online? I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2454 promoting Kevin Inman to the position of Sergeant in the Lower Moreland Police Department.
Motion's been moved and seconded promoting Kevin Inman to the position of Sergeant in the Lower Moreland Police Department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. You don't have any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations Sergeant Inman. Next up is my motion to approve Resolution Number 2455 promoting Anthony Perronase to the position of Corporal in the Lower Moreland Police Department. Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Alright, I'd like to move to make that resolution then.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2455 promoting Anthony Perronase to the position of Corporal in the Lower Moreland Police Department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, no opposed?
Congratulations. I'm assuming we're doing the swearing in now?
Yes. District Justice Tom Mert, here he is.
Thank you very much.
Is in attendance, thank you.
Just a couple remarks. Madam President and Chief Members of the Board, needless to say, you're promoting two outstanding police officers and as the District Judge for Lower Moreland, it's a great honor and privilege to work with these men and women every day, so great job.
Thank you, District Justice.
Just give a brief introduction to both of them before the judge starts, if that's okay? So first is going to be Sergeant Kevin Inman, he's going to be joined up here by his children, Holden, Braden and Brynlee. He's got a lot of other family and friends here. Prior to joining LMPD, he grew up in Titusville, PA, graduated from Titusville High School. I think that makes him a Steelers fan, we won't get into that too much. Did graduate from Penn State University with a degree in criminal crime, law and justice, but a minor in sociology. Put himself in the Delaware County Police Academy where he did win the Physical Fitness Award. Very proud of him for that. Been with LMPD now for approximately 18 years, many, many roles within our department. He's been an FTO, an officer in charge, did many years in our detective division, taser instructor, supervisor evidence, was promoted to Corporal earlier this year, and now is going to be promoted to Sergeant, and I'm very happy to have him maintain that rank Sergeant, so very proud of him. Next up is going to be Corporal Anthony Perronase. He's going to be joined up here by his girlfriend Savannah, who'll be holding the Bible, and again, same thing, lots of other family and friends here supporting him. Prior to joining the LMPD, he did grow up in Haverhill, I like to remind everyone, he's the second best thing to ever come from Haverhill, because that's where I'm from. Graduated from Haverhill, of course, from high school. He attended the Montgomery County Police Academy and he was hired by SEPTA PD and worked there for almost two years prior to joining us. Then with Lower Moreland PD now for three years, he is one of our defensive tactics instructors, our baton instructor and a member of our regional SWAT team. And he does often take part in a lot of our community events, likes to get out there and have his face be seen. So again, very happy to also have him reach the rank of Corporal tonight, so. Going to do you both at the same time or one at a time?
Aye, Kenneth D. Inman. We'll start over. Aye, Kevin D. Inman.
Aye, Kevin D. Inman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Lower Moreland.
And the Township of Lower Moreland.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
And I pledge to uphold, obey and enforce the law.
And I pledge to uphold, obey and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex.
To, with that, with, it's right here, but I missed the name. Without consideration to a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
Religious creed, sexual orientation, age.
National origin, ancestry.
National origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Lower Moreland Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Lower Moreland Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Congrats, Kev.
Aye, Anthony D. Perronase, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Anthony D. Perronase, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Lower Moreland.
And the Township of Lower Moreland.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity and integrity.
I pledge to uphold, obey and enforce the law.
I pledge to uphold, obey and enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race, color, sex.
To a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Lower Moreland Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Lower Moreland Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Congrats, Anthony. I'm assuming we're good to proceed?
Give it 30 seconds, Joe.
No problem. Alright, next up on my agenda is the property acquisition of 2671 Huntington Pike. The board unanimously authorized pursuing the purchase of 2671 Huntington Pike at the October 2024 meeting. The December agenda includes two items for the board's consideration, so we may proceed with the purchase. First up is the agreement of sale. Based on the appraisal results, Solicitor Rice's office prepared the attached agreement of sale based on the list price of $649,000. The offer price is reduced by 3% to $629,530, since no sales side commission needs to be paid. The seller's net proceeds remain the same as if the property was being acquired by a more traditional purchaser. We reviewed a few options for how the purchase of the property would occur. The agreement of sale ultimately acknowledges the simplest way is to make the purchase via cash. The township cash position allows us to confidently recommend this option, while the second consideration on this agenda item will replenish the cash used by July of 2025. This will have no impact on the township's operations. I want to highlight that the other concept was for Burnatham Fire Company to purchase the property and hold it until the township issued the 2025 general obligation bonds. Burnatham Fire Company President Locke Brown, Chief Ken Shoder had confirmed they were agreeable to this idea as a transfer of assets from their current investment account. Had the township's cash position not been conducive for the transaction, I would have recommended this option over a loan which would have incurred interest until it could have been refunded by the bond process. However, it is more direct for the township to make the purchase, so a second transaction is not necessary. The important takeaway is the highlight that BOC's commitment to the upcoming Federus Mill Fire Rescue Transition. The draft agreement of sale includes a settlement date of January 15th, 2025, although there has been an update as of 12/2/24, which will allow us to settle this prior to 12/31/2024. What I'm going to be looking for is a reimbursement resolution, which I'll be going over shortly. Are there any questions on this from the board?
No.
Anything from the public? I'll take that as a no. Alright, so the first item is a motion to execute the agreement of sale as described. I'm going to make that motion.
Motion's been moved and seconded to execute the agreement of sale as described by Commissioner Canelli. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, Commissioner Canelli?
Alright, the second one is consideration of Resolution Number 2456. And as mentioned earlier, the township cash position allows us to complete the transaction in the immediate term. However, I do not recommend the township to plead its general fund reserves in the long term for this purchase. Our bank counsel, Tim Anderson of Taylor English Doom LLP, has provided the attached reimbursement resolution, which will allow us to replenish the general fund reserve with the proceeds from the June 2025 general obligation bond issue. The resolution provides an adequate buffer which considers the possibility cumulative project cost while also giving the ability to recoup other expenses we may incur prior to receiving the bond proceeds. I do not anticipate there will be much else, but it makes sense to have this flexibility. So what I'm looking to do is approve motion number 2456 as described. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, anyone from the board? Anyone from the public? Does anyone have any public comment in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, no Commissioner Canelli, you can make your motion.
I'd like to make that motion, looking for a second.
So give a second. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2456 as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Canelli.
Next up, I would like to call Chief Smith for his report.
So the chief is out for photos with the two promotions, so if we can go to the fire marshal instead?
Sounds great. Fire Marshal Shally.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things to go over. The county, we issued a burn ban back on November 16th, when the county issued that, and it sounds like the state re-discontinued the burn ban this week. So probably by Friday, we'll make a decision on when to lift it here in the township. I'll check with state and county officials. Couple of fire investigations during the month, a couple in Lower Moreland and a couple mutually aid with Atminton, Sheltonham and Upper Moreland. UNOs and slash fire inspections are up this month. Jen and I have been working to get them cleaned up by the end of the year. Unfortunately, a couple more just came up today, so we'll try to get them done before the first of the year. Carson Terrace, we finally did a full building inspection after they had some major issues with their fire alarm, that was taken care of. And just a past, this past month, we had a member of our mutually aid company of Atminton Station 100, one of their, an eight-year-old boy, one of the fireman's sons who has a brain tumor, he has brain cancer, and he lost his eye two weeks ago. We did a drive-by, we had 58 fire, police, EMS and even a helicopter flyover past this gentleman's house for his birthday, and I'm happy to report he's performing pretty well. So, so I have any other further questions for me?
Any questions from the board or public?
You have in your report, and I have to highlight this because I can't believe this is happening. On Saturday night, November 16th.
Yes.
You were in Upper Dublin.
Yes.
Now, how is it that you had to investigate a five-gallon bucket of an unknown material?
So, I'm with the county hazmat team. So I had to drive my personal vehicle, so anytime that, if you get a question, why the Lower Moreland Fire Marshal vehicle is in Upper Dublin? Because I had my hazmat here and equipment, and I was the officer on call that night.
Okay.
And that was a TikTok challenge that these kids are doing.
Are you kidding?
So since I was the officer in charge, I had to respond, and since I'm also a member of Fort Washington, I kind of killed two birds with one stone. So the reason why I put in here that I run with the hazmat team, because sometimes if I miss the hazmat vehicles, you'll see my truck maybe in another township, I want to make sure that you guys know where that truck's at all the time.
No, I really appreciate that, and I want to finish explaining to everyone that the next sentence says, "It was discovered to be a five-gallon bucket filled with gasoline and two fuse-type rock devices to ignite homemade rockets."
Correct.
So the county bomb squad arrived and blew up the device on scene. So I want to thank you for your dedication, your hard work.
Thank the bomb squad too, they were, they were the ones to help, had the issue getting rid of the other families.
What you did was still dangerous, and I'm sorry you had to do it, and it's unbelievable that this was some stupid TikTok joke, no? I already told you earlier today that I was going to be more.
I didn't know this is how I was going to present it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Fire Marshal Shally. Chief Smith for your report, please.
My whole report was omitted, but just some of the highlights I had, so this last month. Thankfully, calls went down a little bit for a change, just over 1,500 calls per service during the month of November. Obviously, our staffing update for the month, we did have two promotions tonight, and thank you all for that. Two very good candidates, I'm very proud of both of them. And then our newest officer that we were in last month is, his first two weeks on the streets, so very early in his training, but with no prior police experience, he's getting everything thrown at him, so it's been very good there. So we are, like we said last month, up to full staffing now at this point. And once officer will get fully done, then we'll truly be up to full staff with 27 full-time officers. A couple more vehicle thefts we had, unfortunately, I regret to announce. But again, just like the prior, I believe it was six we had that I've been recording over the summer, both of these were unlocked with the keys and the cup holder, so makes it very easy on the thieves when that happens. We had had several more theft from vehicles, again, every single one of those was an unlocked vehicle. This is a regional uptick been going on, the entire area around us, Bucks, Montgomery County, Philadelphia County. We are increasing our focus, we do have our unmarked patrols out there, we do have our specialized units that work at night, so we are trying some of that, continuing our social media posts that we've been doing throughout this, just to keep everybody advised and reminding people to lock their cars, take your valuables inside. We are also part of the regional task force through our detective division and then crime sharing networks as well. So we are trying to get to this, and over this last several months, we have had two stolen auto arrests. So we've arrested two people that were stealing cars, and we've had five theft from vehicle arrests. Unfortunately, it's, they get replaced as soon as we arrest one, there's, there's more, they're doing this unfortunately, so. We are making some headway, like I said, the regional task force and the crime sharing we do in this region of the county is very good. So I'm hopeful we'll kind of disprove some of that from happening and continue. So again, we do encourage everyone, like I said, lock your vehicles, hide your valuables, and be observant, be a good neighbor, call 911, we'd much rather go out and it be absolutely nothing than someone, you know, find out the next morning a noise they heard was someone getting in their neighbor's car or whatever. So please just call 911, we'd rather come out and it be absolutely nothing. We did have, this month, we had our annual state-required defensive tactics, which we incorporated our equine assisted training, so it got our officers some extra hands-on skills with de-escalation, stress management, team building, mental health response. It was a very positive program, so like I said, we were able to join Kindle Hill Society, which is in Blue Bell, and use their gym for our defensive tactics portion, and then roll it right into the mental health awareness and everything that we're continuing that training. We did have our Toys for Tots, the Battle of the Badges. Big thanks to the fire department for hosting that, so it was very, very well attended. The ambulances, the fire companies, everybody was out there, it was a great event. We also had our Camp Out for Hunger and our food drive. So we benefit WMMR, which is the Camp Out for Hunger, and then we also split our donations and gave half of it to the Montgomery County Health and Human Services for their food drive, so. I know the SWAT team is very big in the Camp Out for Hunger, our regional SWAT team, and that one, I believe, we brought 1,400, over 1,400 pounds of food to that, so it was great thing. Last but not least, bus control still continues, bus patrol, excuse me. That's the cameras on the side of the buses. We had one down from our 300 a month we were getting, so hopefully we're starting to make some headway there, and not going to have quite as many. However, it was Thanksgiving holiday, we have a lot of buses out, so I do believe we're probably going to continue around that same couple hundred a month, unfortunately, if people go past our buses, but. So that's all I have in that report, if there's anything specific or any specific questions?
I would like to stay on scale. I was wondering if you could explain to people what the lock the box is in front of Huntington Place, down on Welsh Road?
So that, being that it was a state where we did have to work to, with Penn Doc to get the approval to do it, the paintings were put out there because we had a lot of complaints from the residents that were trying to exit that community onto Welsh Road from Carson Terrace specifically. So what that does is it puts that box in there, and there's also, we increased the signage. There was one existing sign, we added a second sign a little further back to hopefully just remind people that you shouldn't be stopped in the intersection, because the complaints we were getting is that people were having to wait several cycles of the light because the traffic backed up on Welsh Road and made it impossible for them to get out. Our traffic safety officers are out there, that is a high priority one for them. So again, the more they're out there, they are enforcing it and trying to have a good presence out there to try and dissuade some of it, but it does continue because that, just the dynamics of those, basically like three lights in a row. You have Huntington Pike in Philmont, you have Welsh and Carson Terrace, and then you get into Turwood. Just kind of creates a backlog at specific times of the day, mostly in the mornings and in the evenings. But we are out there enforcing it, and the paint in the roadway is supposed to be just an extra visual deterrent to people to not be in that area so that the cars can get out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, public or board? Thank you very much, Chief. Chief Showmaker.
Good evening, everyone. Let me try to be really brief tonight, since we have a lot on the agenda. My report was submitted to both managers, my joint report for both communities. See some items highlighted there. Just to pick a couple of them out, been working very hard with the 911 center to do the reprogramming of our radios to migrate into the station 19, which we are planning on launching January 6th, I've always welcomed. Seems to be on target at this point, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes that happens with that, and I'm getting, trying to get that done in a timely fashion, and I've had a great cooperation with both organizations trying to achieve that. As you're aware, the tower ladder has arrived. We did have our factory training last Friday and Saturday, braving the frigid weathers of Friday and Saturday outside most of the time. Both organizations were involved with that. We had a very complex inside training and then moved to the outside, getting great feedback from both organizations on the vehicle. Very easy to operate and the ease of setting it up is what everybody seems to be commenting on. It's much easier than what we previously had. Hats off to Chief Midlemann and Chief Engineer Amato, who's been coordinating the training events for this and working with both organizations to make sure everybody's being trained on it at the same time as much as possible, as well as getting individuals out to learn how to drive it. It handles a lot easier than the last truck we had, it's a little bit shorter, so it's more maneuverable. Highlight a couple of calls of interest, on 11/2, we were at 3644 Glen Way for a dwelling fire. Turned out to be an electrical fire that extended up an exterior wall. On 11/3, we're at Buck and Byberry Road for a very large brush fire. We spent quite a few hours out there and laid, what did you say, about three? We spent quite a few hours out there and laid, what did you say, about three thousand foot of hose back up through the fields to try to attack this fire. We had a a huge response from our mutual aid partners as well on that. Uh, on eleven fourteen sixteen twenty Pine Road in Abington Township, we were a mutual aid assist on a commercial structure fire, which happened to be an occupied school and church at the time. Uh, our folks were first on scene and on arrival with heavy fire conditions from the roof area of that with the building being evacuated of the young uh children that were in there. We were down there for about three hours and in service on that call. Also on eleven fourteen, about five thirty at night, we were dispatched to Canada Line and Bucksmont for a vehicle extrication. It was a pickup truck versus a school bus. It was a very lengthy and technical operation. Uh, we had multiple rescue uh companies from our mutual aid partners, both Montgomery and Bucks County, working on that job. Uh, hats off to everybody. We we really got put to the test on that one. It was a very challenging event for us. It was handled very well and uh very pleased with the outcome of it. Um, just to highlight the calls volume for the month. Uh, Brenneth and Parkman, I'll give you theirs because there are pizzas as well. Metro calls in Brenneth seven. In Lower Moreland, one hundred and seventeen, uh outside of the area, seventy eight, for a total of two hundred and two for the month. Year to date, nineteen hundred and ninety nine EMS calls. That's approximately a hundred and sixty seven calls more than last year at this time. Uh, for fire calls for Brenneth, it's three in the borough, uh thirty one into Lower Moreland, six outside the area. And their call volume was forty for the month and their year-to-date call volume was four hundred and five, which is up from their previous year. And then Huntington Valley Fire Calls in Lower Moreland Township. Uh, we had forty calls in Brenneth and Borough. They responded there two times. Five to outside agencies for a total of calls for the month of four hundred, or I'm sorry, forty seven. For year-to-date total, four hundred and thirty one. I believe based on the information that I provided in my study, this is the busiest year they've seen since the data I used in that, which was twenty eighteen. And they're up about forty six calls for the year last year. That concludes what I have in my report.
What's uh driving that increase of calls?
Don't know. It's, you know, there's.
Does it spread across?
It's everywhere. It's it's not just here, but you know, the uh, we try to look at the uh EMS calls. And it it's really, I just, it's everybody shorthand. And so we get called to cover other calls in other areas. They get called to come cover us. Uh, we always have an ambulance up twenty-four seven. Sometimes we have two ambulances up. We try to, you know, mitigate the calls that come in. Sometimes we have to send the fire engine to try to assist on those calls. It's it's, we do what we do to, or what we can to combat it as what we get dispatched to.
Yeah, I was wondering, is it a certain type of call that you're noticing is of higher volume?
They're all mixed. It's it's unpredictable. You never know what's going to happen each day, which is, it's nice for us because it gives a little bit different flavor every day. But uh again, our our volumes are up, which means the demand for service is up.
Regarding EMS on this, we've had the development of the fifty-five plus on Philmont Avenue, which is producing an extra, what, seven to ten calls per month right there? Plus the additional development throughout the township is also aiding to your EMS dispatches. Regarding the fire alarms and fire calls, general population growth and development.
Yeah, I can, you know, the, when you mentioned the uh, let's call them, I don't know if you want to call them age restricted or adult population facilities. Uh, we're seeing a mix of which facility, sometimes one's higher than the other each month. This month, it seems like the Huntington Valley Nursing Facility has most calls.
The old man or care.
Right, sometimes it's press and fields and sometimes it's glory day. It changes every month. So it's not consistent. It's it's, I can't predict that. But what I wanted to is, you know, my focus on twenty twenty-five, you know, I I provide you a report that is bullet points of activity, which is okay, but we're going to try to get into more performance-based reporting to you so you can see the improvements that we're going to make based on what we're doing to achieve that. It's going to take a little time because I'm trying to bring both fire companies into one reporting system. But as we get there, I'll I'll try to filter a little bit in each month and see if we can get a little bit better in the reporting that we're giving you on it.
So what's the progress on that?
Yeah, we uh currently the uh the Brenneth and Sign uses what's called ESO. It's it's a uh, it's the largest company that's in the market right now that does the uh reporting. Uh, the company that Huntington Valley uses is actually been sold to ESO, but they are not absorbing what, how they use their the information. So uh one of the the captains from Huntington Valley has been meeting the office manager of Brenneth. And we're looking at how do we integrate them into that? We've got some pricing on that. It did to get the basics, we're probably looking at about a fifteen hundred dollar annual cost to start the basic portion. But I need to make sure it's going to completely cover all the needs from both organizations. One thing I am not real thrilled about it is the reporting mechanism. It may be because I'm not familiar with how to draw those analytics out of it. Or they want you to pay to have them create the reports that you can do. And I want to be able to go in in a month, push a button, say, okay, that's what I need for my report by none of these meetings. All right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board or the public?
I have a question. You can just say it. Chuck, we've been there. He said every month he give a out of service report. Uh, last month was seventy-eight calls out of service. What does that mean? Does that mean the EMS is not available for the township or the borough when they're out?
I think you're confusing that with on another call.
On another call?
Then we're out of service.
Okay.
We may be on multiple calls at the same time. Like for instance, yesterday, we had three calls at the same time. Today, we have three calls at the same time. So if we have a second ambulance up, it handles the second call. The third one would be handled by a mutual aid assignment coming in.
Can I clarify that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Seventy-eight is other out of area, meaning not in Lower Moreland or Brenneth that they cover. That's the answer to that question for you, Chuck.
But we have a hundred and fifteen. We have a hundred and fifteen calls on another call so far this year, which is the second call. And we handle those during daytime. We have more staffing at nighttime. The nighttime calls may go to a mutual aid agency company and to cover us, or vice versa.
Okay, so you said you had three the other day. So two were covered by our EMS service from the borough. Okay, the third one was covered by second wrongers? Okay, thank you.
Chief, one more question.
Sure. Uh, that's excellent, yes.
Uh, yeah. Oh, how is the hiring going? You're seeing on Facebook that you're still looking for.
Yeah, we've uh interviewed, I'm going to say approximately eighteen votes, I think it was, over the last month. We've made a number of hires, both full-time and pretty in positions. We still have a couple of positions to fill, but we're doing very well with that. We had a great response to the first round of advertisement. Uh, it's a very competitive field out there, so we have to watch. We did increase our pay rates a little bit to try to stay competitive. But uh we're doing very well with that right now.
So does that mean that we will have both ambulances fully stocked?
During the daytime, yes. Seven days a week.
Okay.
At nighttime, no. At nighttime, our goal is to have two EMS personnel and two fire personnel on.
Okay.
Now, there could be some trade-off i- if a second ambulance call comes in at night, which would be within Brenneth or Lower Moreland, they may take that call. But we try to keep them available for the fire presence as well, because it's tough to get the trucks out in the middle of the night. You know, folks got to get it for work the next day. So we're trying to do the best. This was our interim plan that we were instructed to come up with and do, and that's what we're executing.
Okay.
Right?
So when do we see that those people onboarding?
Some are actually on board already and the scheduling will start beginning in January.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Showmaker. Next, that brings me to my liaison positions. One is the Civil Service Commission. We had the promotions tonight. They were notified of the set promotions. Next one is the Huntington Valley Library. Uh, their annual appeal mailer went out on November eleventh. Anyone interested in donating can visit the library website and can donate via the button. Saturday, December fourteenth at two P M, the library welcomes family stage Back to Present, Jack and the Beanstalk. Please call or visit the library website, R S P P. Thursday, December nineteenth at seven P M, there will be an adult social group. We'll hold a white elephant gift exchange. Stop by to meet some neighbors and have fun exchanging gifts. The library will be closed December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and thirty-first for the holidays. We would like, they would like to thank the township for all their support in twenty twenty-four. That ends my report. Back to you, President Kurts.
Thank you, Vice President Canelli. Glad to have you online. Uh, my agenda is next. Uh, the Chair of Internal Affairs Committee. First item on the agenda is review and consider the minutes on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the minutes?
No.
Anyone from the public? Anyone on Zoom? Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the November twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the November twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no opposed. Thank you, Commissioners. Next review and consider December twenty twenty-four bill list. Commissioners, any questions regarding the list? Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, move this to a vote. Make a motion to approve the December twenty twenty-four bill list.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the December twenty twenty-four bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 No opposed. Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is review and consider adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget. So as authorized at our Board's November twenty twenty-four meeting, the twenty twenty-five budget has been advertised for public inspect inspections. It the, it is on our township website, it's been on our township website. Uh, the final technical step is consideration of our attached tax levy and appropriations ordinance. It's in our tabloids, Commissioners. That has also been advertised and prescribed by law. Uh, just to go over very short, um, our uh budget proposes raising the total millage from five point six seven four to six point two seven four based on increases in two funds. The General Fund and the Fire Tax Fund. It would be a total of a hundred and twenty-six dollars based on a two hundred and ten thousand dollar assessed home. So the two funds that have the increase, again, is the General Fund millage, which will have an increase. Currently, it's at three point two three mils. It will go to three point four two mils. This would be an increase of thirty-nine ninety for the average home to cover expenses related to administration, public safety, police, fire marshal, coenforcement, public works, and some transfers to different accounts. Um, two note for everyone and for the public, the General Fund has not been increased since twenty twenty-one. Uh, the trash fee will stay the same at their current levels, which everyone keeps asking me. It will be two collections per week. Um, we will continue provisions of the township's no-cost e-waste. So if you have any e-waste, take it in. Public Works is always glad to receive it and continue to provide our annual fall leaf collection and composting program. And the sewer fee is reallocated to seventy dollars a quarter from the base sewer rate of each billing cycle to the newly created stormwater rate in order to fulfill expenses needed for staffing, engineering, equipment, capital projects, and capital planning needs related to stormwater management. Well, basically, what does that look like for an assessed home at two hundred and ten thousand dollars? If you're assessed at that rate, um, your township taxes would be one thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents base value, based on the proposed millage for twenty twenty-five with the increase in the two funds, as I described, the General Fund at thirty-nine ninety, the Fire Tax Fund at eighty-six ten for a total of a hundred and twenty-six dollars. Big major details. Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Thank you for all his hard work. Uh, we all thank him, um, you know, on the budget. Uh, and all details and breakdowns were are on our township website. So does anyone, um, on our board have any questions? I know we've we've been through this. We had a few meetings. So, um, Manager Hoffman, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, there's, I guess, one significant topic that I do want to address, um, because the specificity that we've been, uh, I guess, seeking from Brenneth and Borough, we now have. Um, so just wanted to introduce that to the board and and the public, um, and uh I guess see where this conversation goes uh throughout the next year. So just as Commissioner Kurts stated, the the final item for your budget considerations uh is that tax levy and appropriations ordinance. Everything that is being considered tonight is exactly what was in the budget presentations, what was detailed last month. So the item to call out um related to fire services, it has no material impact on the budget that you are adopting for twenty twenty-five. But obviously, it does have um kind of greater consideration within the overall fire services project. So Brenneth and Borough Council, they adopted their budget this month. Um, and they revised the cost share that we had included in uh the the Board's uh fire tax budget. So I had prepared that budget based on direct communication uh with Borough Council President Jeff Elsing, uh who advised that we should proceed with an eighty-five fifteen split. But you'll recall, all through the approval process, I kept reminding the board that until both budgets were adopted, we kind of could not commit to what that that funding breakdown was going to be. But to set up the board for success, I made sure that the first uh millage adjustment that was going to be done as part of this project um would be sufficient, kind of regardless of what Borough Council decided to do. Um, so following their their meeting, I spoke with Jeff. Um, and again, was disappointed to learn that Borough Council did not take his recommendation for the eighty-five fifteen. What they did approve in their budget reflects the following funding. So uh first to uh what Chief Showmaker just talked about with hiring the additional four firefighters. That's not something that's kind of part of the way that funds go from the borough to the township to pay for operations. This instead was something where each municipality provides funding to Brenneth and Fire Company. So for that interim recommendation, Borough Council will be providing ten percent of the requested funding. Um, the township is still going to provide eighty-five percent. So that will require for twenty twenty-five, Brenneth and Fire Company to cover that five percent balance. On the tower ladder loan payment, um, so this is the first of seven years of loan payments we will make um for the balance uh of one point one million dollars on that truck. The Borough is going to provide ten percent towards that twenty twenty-five loan payment. The budget had otherwise been uh shown to to expect fifteen. However, based on the uh the the capital planning that the board had been doing, we have the funds to to be able to cover that and kind of look at this from a big picture perspective next year before we make any sort of longer-term commitment to that. We did make a one million dollar down payment in twenty twenty-four towards the tower ladder so that we didn't have to borrow and incur as much interest uh on the total cost. The Borough is still going to provide fifteen percent of a reimbursement towards that one million dollars. Uh, so I have a schedule where uh we will invoice the Borough and they will reimburse that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then, one that I'll have greater commentary on later, um, for the Chief of Emergency Services position, um, the Borough seeks to reduce their introduction for Chief Showmaker's spot from twenty-five percent to ten percent. So, big picture, this means for us, so Chief Showmaker is making progress on the consolidated operations. He said the date was January sixth at night. That's the the kind of the major operations benefit. That is what we have been working as a staff to be able to provide guidance to the board and to the community about how do we adequately provide this service? And this is that interim step. So with that about to roll out the the kind of consolidated operations at Station nineteen, that is a a huge interim step for that coverage. We do not want to lose uh the momentum for that. Um, after speaking with Jeff, I did, Jeff Elsing, I did request that he provide a written summary of the Borough's position um so that we can review what their rationale is for those funding initiatives. Uh, because as we go to review that, we're looking at the realm of decisions and 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 uh advice that we might take from that. And one hypothetically, perhaps ninety-ten actually is a fair basis um for all of the metrics that we would look at from percentage of calls uh to total assessed value in each town, understanding what the tax implications would be on the borough level that has just barely over three hundred homes and one business park for the tax base compared to Lower Moreland being much bigger. Perhaps that is the takeaway. But also perhaps we determine on the other side of that, that ultimately this partnership that we have sought to build um kind of after the two fire companies had had began the the merger discussions and invited us to that process. I I really want to call out just the 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 positive um just relationship that was built with uh Jeff Elsing with him. Um, through that process, we've been getting to the point of hiring Chief Showmaker. Um, that was a lot of time, a lot of effort, and we're really proud of the thing that that we put together and have been able to uh advise the board about. But perhaps in a ninety-ten funding split, that is not something that that justifies the Borough having an equal seat at the table for all of the decisions that are made there. And maybe there's another way to look at that. The main thing that I want to convey tonight is that we have time to review all of that because the actual funding implications of this decision for twenty twenty-five really are relatively minimal. For twenty twenty five really are relatively minimal. There's nothing that needs to change in the budget that you were considering this evening. Um, so we have time to have those conversations. And the the one other specific thing that I do want to call out, the desire to reduce the funding for Chief Showmaker's position from twenty five percent to ten percent. We have the funding MOU that was done between the two municipalities. The starting date of that agreement is September of twenty twenty three, which was based off of when Chief Showmaker began. That agreement has a two-year term, and only after those two years can one of the municipalities provide six months' notice for a change or to back out of that agreement. So I don't know that the Borough necessarily thought of that at the the point that they were making that decision. So I think we need to just go back and make sure that we have our correct administrative understanding. And once we have the written explanation from the Borough, just continue the good faith conversation that we've been having along. Um, but make sure that we're upholding the obligations that we each agreed to unanimously of the Commissioners, unanimously of Borough Council at the time that those were done. Um, so that's the the one update that I wanted to give, um. Obviously, it's been a very intense portion of the conversations that we've been having to get to this point, um, but also just. And I don't want to minimize, but just want to make sure that the Board understands and is comfortable. This does not impact the budget that you are about to adopt. We will continue to review and anything that either stays the same or changes, we will continue to work into the budget projections that we do. As we would roll out the twenty two six and twenty seven, twenty eight versions of this, as we continue to make progress on the new radis, the property acquisitions, the. Building, all of the next step things that are going to happen, which we're going to necessitate this conversation to happen. So that's my one addition, uh, for this evening. Otherwise, your the ordinance that has been advertised, I would recommend that you receive with that when you were comfortable to do so.
Okay, then any questions on board?
Chris, I I have some questions. So, um, you know, just to put this into further perspective, I mean, we're talking, you know, essentially, you know, five. Yeah, so it's one thing, so, uh, Chief Showmaker's position, uh, we need to revisit that. If we're at Athan based on the agreement, so we think, I don't think that's necessarily something that we need to discuss tonight. In terms of the, um, the down payment, that's fifteen percent, so that's no change to what we had planned on, so there's no change here. With respect to the other items, at least for twenty twenty five, can you put it into the context? We're talking five percent, but can you this? Do you have some back of the envelope numbers, what that, what that really translates?
So the the two things that have specific funding in the in the the fire tax budget. Um, the four career firefighters component dropping that down to ten percent, it's asking Burnath and Fire Company to fund twenty two thousand dollars. Um, and again, that's not money that is going to come from the township. On the tower ladder loan, that decrease from fifteen to ten percent is the difference of nine thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars.
Five percent of one point one million dollars?
Seven year loan, so it's one of the loans.
It's the five thousand.
One point seven five percent of that.
Okay. I thought it was a total, not a one point one.
I mean, if you apply that to all seven years of the loan payment, then yes.
Yeah.
So, but we're we're looking at a one-year look at this for next year, it would change the funding towards that one loan payment by nine thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars.
So fifty five thousand dollars. Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless they come up next year, who knows?
Unless they what?
Come up next year.
They're trying to get out a two-year deal one year early, so we can't expect anything at this point.
Everything's in negotiation, you know that, Joe.
So for this year, the twenty twenty five budget, um, the recommendation is to move forward as planned. Um, it's our statutory obligation to provide public safety services when being fired to our community. And, uh. With regard, thank you, Manager Hoffman, because I know that you will represent our Board's concerns and help us navigate through this. Um, does anyone else from the Board have any questions for Manager Hoffman?
I just think it's fairly obvious that we're all disappointed.
Yes.
As I'm sure several of the Burnath and folks are as well. But I thought it should be said out loud.
Sure, I I just want to make one other comment. Um, I, you know, I I think I share the same sentiment is that, you know, disappointed. That, you know, we at this stage of the game that, that what we were told or what we expected. Has changed, and I'm not sure I fully understand why. So I, you know, I'll look forward to receiving, you know, that memo from Burnath and to further explain how they justify. Uh, going from fifteen percent to ten percent. But having said all that, you know, at the end of the day, we still needed to move forward what we're doing, right? So we have an obligation to lower residents of Lowermoreland. And I do believe that the, the direction that we're heading regardless of if Burnath and was part of this is the right direction. So, you know, I don't want to say, you know, ten percent is better than zero percent, but I am disappointed and I I I do want to publicly say that. Uh, so, there will be comments.
Uh, uh, and is Burnath and Council also aware that we increased from thirty two thousand contribution to sixty four thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
I also want to join in echoing what Dennis and Ruth said. I'm grossly disappointed that the Borough did not come on board and go with the fifteen percent as was indicated and drop to the ten percent.
I agree that I I believe that we're we're all feeling the same way. Thank you, and, uh. That the contributions aren't really so, and the disappointment. Um, but knowing what we have to do, you know, provide in our will. So with that being said, if the Board, the Board doesn't have any physical comments, uh, we'll move this first. Mr. Rick Day, will you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Chuck McDade, they'll go. Chris, thank you for your work, but I have a question. You said that the Borough did agree to the ten percent. Did the council vote on it? The council, Monday night, they didn't vote on it at their council meeting, so they had the second meeting and they did.
They approved.
They approved the budget for the fire. But they then they had to approve the budget in January for the Borough, where they approved that also.
Budget's approved.
Okay, so everything is agreed upon. Council did vote?
Just to clarify what's happening here, it's the same as your process. The vote that the Board makes in November and what Borough Council did in December, there's two things that happen. The first is that you do a resolution which adopts the budget. So I spoke with Vicki earlier today, the vote of Borough Council adopted their budget at the December meeting. You also do a tax levying appropriations ordinance, which is what you're considering tonight. That's the other remaining step for for the Borough. They will consider that at their January meeting. But the budget has been voted on and adopted in the same way you voted on and adopted your budget.
Okay, so it's ninety ten now. And then we visit it next year again. To twenty twenty five is ninety ten, right?
In everything except the reimbursement for the down payment, which is still eighty five fifteen.
Still eighty five fifteen.
We also need to address whether or not they even have the ability to decrease the Chief Showmaker component.
Right.
To ninety ten from seventy five twenty five.
Okay.
So while that is in their budget, we have a lot to discuss.
All right, and that'll be made public?
What will be made public?
The discussion that you want to have and the numbers and everything?
Yes.
Everything were very transparent.
Do you think our township knows about this? How how, just a percentage wise from Denise I'm asking you. Percentage wise of what's going on here tonight with the 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 merge talk, the Burnath and Fire Department, how many residents?
I can't answer that question.
Right.
I mean.
Do you think that?
Hold on.
With all due respect, it is public comment, and I know you know I'm very kind always to you and everyone, it's public comment, and we're having a back and forth though.
Yeah, it's just public comment, Chuck.
Okay, so I have a question then. I'm allowed to ask a question. I'm a taxpayer, okay?
Public comment.
Can we notify each township resident of what's going on here with the fire department?
So Chuck, it has been notified. It's been public the whole time that we're doing this. We have it publicized on the township website and so on. Thank you for your comments.
So you're not going to do it then?
It's already been done, Chuck.
It hasn't been done. No, you haven't notified the residents. If they don't come to this meeting, Joe, they don't know nothing about it.
Chuck, I disagree, and that's fine. We can have a difference of opinion. Thank you.
We do. We do have a difference of opinion because, Joe, you know that I can honestly sit here and say that this room is never this full. At any given meeting, except when there's persons for police officers or when there's a a, um. Company here wanting to put a presentation on, there's usually two or three people here. And that's the amount of people that we get at these meetings. So if you want to say that maybe two to three percent of the township knows about this. Uh, that's even high. I'm just asking for the township and the Board to agree to send a letter out explaining what's going on in our township. With the fire departments. I think that's fair.
Mr. Rick Day, I hear your concern.
Well, I would like, I would like you to take that under consideration.
And and I will, and that was my next thought.
I just want to make one other comment, and and, you know, these meetings are public. And, you know, I'm certainly in full security of explaining what what's happening in in each of the wards, and I think every one of the township Commissioners that are here. Are more than happy to continue to to have a dialogue on how best to do it. With all due respect. Uh, Mr. Rick Day, we just learned of this, uh, you know, within the last twenty four, forty eight hours. So when you're asking, but this has been made public to the rest of the residents, I don't know if there's there has been time aside from this meeting tonight.
Well, I'd be asking you to make it public by notifying each resident taxpayers in the township. I I I think it's only fair. I I I really do. I I think it's only fair that we explain what this township's getting into. Into a merge with fire departments and how much it's costing each taxpayer each year. We're talking, I mean, Chris, you did a great job with the budget. I always appreciate your budget meetings. You're very, uh, thorough with them. You explain everything. But, you know, what I heard last month is we're looking at a a a three-year tax increase here in the township, but I think it would be fair to to notify our residents of that. All right.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate your comments and your concerns. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rick Day. Anyone else? Sure, cool.
So bear with me because I don't normally ask questions or talk. I've never been to a budget meeting, but.
Can you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry, Karen Bond. And you said something very significant that there is a two-year agreement. So please help me understand. How do you get out of a two-year agreement? Like, I can't get out of a two-year agreement with anybody I make agreement with. Was it just like a handshake? Or was it a formal agreement? So how do we all just say we're disappointed? Like, isn't there something more?
So, yeah, we're not suggesting that we have accepted.
Right.
That, so.
Oh, okay.
The premise of my comments was that we need to respond to that once they inform us, correct?
Okay, thank you. Because it just sounded like everybody's comment was, oh, we're so sorry.
There's a couple of things that.
I'm kind of a little bit like, a little bit outraged because I can't get out of agreements just by saying.
There were multiple items we discussed about changes in percentages. One of the items has a contract for two years, which we're about one year in.
Yeah, but everything else is is something we decided for this year, this in this year for next year and is separate from that agreement.
And and, yeah, I do appreciate the transparency and things like that. So so thank you.
And the manager will, you know.
Thank you.
Represent us and our comments and our concerns and help us navigate through this.
I'm just saying, you know, they're here.
Yeah.
So Burnath and folks are here.
Anyone else?
Eric Meyer thirteen twenty Welshrude. Uh, first of all, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, for, um, for listening to me, Manager. And has everyone of you received my email? Can I send out? Let me make sure, okay. So I'm here tonight, uh, to discuss the twenty twenty five budget, which rests the fiscal responsibility of Commissioners to make sure that each department in Lowermoreland. Is the operating efficiently with no waste. Uh, when it's deep with my neighbors and other residents in Lowermoreland, a common theme arises, the high taxes in our township. Many say that they are not sustainable, and as a retired resident, I agree. There is an ever increasing tax burden on each of us, and because of this, I felt a need to address this issue. Because I am unfamiliar with the operation of other departments within the township and their budgets, I will not be addressing those departments, however. Because of my expertise in this area and my familiarity with the code enforcement zoning department, I would like to address their budget. First, I would like to stress that I have no personal issue with any employees of the code enforcement zoning department. This is strictly a matter of fact. Uh, inquiry to the tax burden that residents of Lowermoreland Township will be required to spend. In my email to each Commissioner. Uh, for clarity, I detailed the definition and duties of a building code official and a construction code official. The building code official, BCO, is permitted to administer the Pennsylvania. Uh, Uniform Construction Code, the PA UCC, but they cannot perform any construction plans or perform any construction inspections. A construction code official may perform construction inspections for only each of the disciplines in which they have been certi- certified. And to date, it's a minimum of, uh, ten certifications are required to inspect all aspects of residential and commercial construction with the exception of electrical. Uh, I also included a comparison of Upper Moreland and Lowermoreland. I know we're not Upper Moreland, but it was a pretty good comparison. Upper Moreland is seven point five square miles, population of twenty six thousand approximately. And Lowermoreland is approximately seven square miles with a population of approximately fourteen thousand. So a little little denser population. Upper Moreland has a building code, uh, department that operates with building code officials. Fully certified in all areas of residential and commercial, save electrical. Uh, to perform all the required zoning, administration of the building codes, construction plan reviews. And construction inspections without the added cost of a third-party inspection service. It is my opinion that our township should not be required to hire a third-party inspection service in addition to the two building code officials already on staff. Lowermoreland Township should be able to operate more economically and efficiently. With two fully certified building code officials slash construction code officials. So in conclusion, I found it necessary to come tonight and directly address this issue in person. And I'm not here to offer solutions. This is the responsibility of the Township Manager and Commissioners. I'm here to shed light on the staffing of one department through which I am familiar. That has employed two billion building code officials. And a third-party inspection service. I strongly believe that if the two building code officials possess all of the proper construction code official certifications. Then Lowermoreland Township would not need to hire a third-party inspection service and therefore save hundred and ten thousand dollars in the budget.
That's three and a half minutes, so. There's a three-minute time limit, so you're over, but wrap up.
That's it. I'm I'm done.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Thank you so much for your comment. And I appreciate the conversation we had, and I know Commissioner Val can also.
Yes, thank you for getting.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else? Anyone else on? No hands raised. Wait a second. Okay. We have, we have two.
I have a one eight six county landlord and also the Burnath and Borough manager. I just want to tell you that Burnath and Borough Council has never discussed making any changes to that contract.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I said that Borough Council has not made any. Has not discussed any changes to that contract.
Hmm, okay.
Hi, Jim Griffey, Spokum Road, um. Going off of what Eric was talking about, if we have two BCOs that aren't C, uh, CEOs. They could move towards just going to school, getting their certifications, and they could wrap that up with three years. So just as a thought. That window was laid off, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you so much for your comment. Anyone else? Any hands raised on Zoom? Okay, Tom. I'll move to make the motion to approve ordinance number seven seven seven, which is our tax levy and appropriation. One second.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve our ordinance number seven seven seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the next item on my agenda is our administration report, Manager Hoffman.
All right, just a few items to add beyond the budget conversation this evening. With the first, um, just wanted to point out, um, continuing the discussion regarding the acquisition of the ANC parcel. As part of the, uh, fire rescue station project, we have a stakeholders meeting, uh, scheduled at the school district involving ANC, Burnath and Borough. Uh, the Burnath and School District, the Township and the, uh, Lowermoreland School District, uh, scheduled for Thursday morning. Um, also wanted to point out just an exciting thing on the budgetary side. We did receive notice, uh, of a successful DEP nine oh two grant application. Um, that was the one that we were seeking to offset, uh, the expenses related to the new swap. Um, that was the one that we were seeking to offset uh, the expenses related to the new swap loader truck that would be the second to help with. Leaf collection and all sorts of things in public works. Um, so we received the maximum two hundred thousand dollars towards that. So we'll be able to proceed uh, with that purchase, um, only incurring two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. At max of local dollars compared to the total four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar cost. Um, also just with other ongoing projects, we have a P P A negotiation meeting scheduled Friday. Um, also just to keep with the schedule of things that need to happen uh, related to Act one eleven. Um, we are also going through the process of picking the uh, neutral arbitrator. So in the event we are not able to reach an agreement, that will get uh, that scheduled for sometime next year. But obviously, the goal is to try to reach an agreement first. And then one item that uh, actually Ted had reminded me of that I should have included on this agenda. Um, one of the other uh, appointments that is coming due in early January is where the zoning hearing board. Um, I believe she's the Chair, Merle Torski. Uh, her appointment comes due in early January, but their meeting is not until the sixteenth. Um, so I can bring that uh, on your January agenda so that we've adequately provided the notice to do that. Um, but actually, Merle was kind enough to reach out to us saying, hey, I never heard from you on the schedule that we have always reached out to her. Um, so just so that we have uh, a full zoning hearing board for January, um, we will do that for uh, your January fourteenth meeting. And that is everything I have for this evening, unless you have any questions.
I do not avoid. Does the public have any questions from Manager Huffman? Manager Huffman, anyone from the public? Okay, Manager Huffman, I will accept your reports as submitted. Uh, next is our tax collector. Uh, report, our collected tax collector Jane Sale. I see up there online. Aye, Jane.
Denise, thank you very much. So fees collections are at ninety-eight point forty-seven percent. The actual collections, which includes the discount amounts and penalties paid, is at ninety-six point eighty-two percent. The outstanding balance due to the township is ninety-seven thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Uh, reminder notices did go out from the beginning of December, I mean, beginning of November. We did get quite a few payments in. The tax office will be closed the week of Christmas, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. But I will be in the office all next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and I will have additional hours on Thursday. December the thirty-first from nine to one for anyone that wants to come in and make their last minute payment.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for? Tax collector Jane Sale. Anyone from the public have any questions for our tax collector or? If not, thank you, Channel. Except your report is submitted.
Thank you, Denise.
Next is my liaison report, Sloughmore Township School District, Lowermore Township School District Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. And Community, uh, Lowermore Township Community Events. Uh, start off with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. Uh, meetings are not going to be starting up until twenty twenty-five. Um, with regard to the school district, I attended the December third work session meeting online. For everyone's information on our board, the school board had their reorganization meeting. Dr. Lee remains as president. Dr. Butler is remaining as vice president, so congratulations to them. Uh, Mr. Rick Wind gave a school facilities update. It was mostly about the PennDOT improvements project on Redline Road. They're in good shape and the signals are prominent, and he states much safer. It looks amazing. And you know, the lines, everything, much safer for the kids. Um, he just said still outstanding, um, Pico when they were out to take care of their gas improvements, they still need to get. Uh, have Pico come out uh, to finish up uh, a portion of the project and in hopes that it will be done in two weeks, so. Um, basically before the holidays. So regarding the whole high school project, um, the entirety of the project should be complete by January sometime. He was saying the electrical, the general, and the mechanical contracts are. Diligently working on their punch list items and trying to close out. And also just uh, if everyone does want to take a look while we're talking about budgeting, the school district is also discussing their twenty-five, twenty-six budgeting. And their process, so you can find all their information. Um, at the Lowermoreland Township School District website, which is W W W dot L N T S T dot org. Um, do any Commissioners have any questions? Anyone from the public? If not, that concludes my agenda items. Uh, next, the Chair recognizes Commissioner Dennis Mueller, Chair of the Community Development Committee. Commissioner Mueller.
Thank you, President Kurtz. The first item on the agenda is to review the sketch plan for twenty-six hundred Philmont Avenue. So I will invite the applicants to community, as they're, as they're coming up. This is uh, just to give everybody a point of perspective, but I'm sure we're gonna talk about where this is. This is the corner of Philmont Avenue and Redline Road, across from the uh, T V bed. And the proposal is to develop a senior living facility and be a second use on the property. And again, I I want to remind everybody, uh, as in previous sketch plans review, that there's no vote tonight. This is the opportunity for the applicants to show what they're proposing to us. They've been through the planning committee back uh, November twentieth. And this is another opportunity for them to share with the Board of Commissioners as well as the public. And for the township staff to be able to ask questions. And be able to convey their reports and select, uh, to solicit some feedback on the project. So with that, I will allow you to introduce yourself and the board as well as the public material.
Thank you, thank you. My name's Michael Manioni. I'm the attorney. Manny Mathai, he's the principal of twenty-six hundred Philmont Avenue Acquisition LLC. Brian LeCary is our planner and John Anderson is the engineer. I have a couple of additional things I'd like to hand out.
Sure.
Well, this is just the Google Earth. That is a little different, yes. Did make a couple of changes in the sketch plan. Like, Mr. Muller said, we met with the Township Planning Commission in um, November. Again, the basic concept is to try and utilize, and if you look at the Google Earth. Uh, what that does, it it helps show how much of the lot is just not developed. Um, it's basically all the way up in this triangular area, and that's all wooded. And you know, it's hard to really envision how much of it is just undeveloped. It's a, it's not, it's behind the Fairway Office Building. Um, we're just looking to utilize this space. Fairway Office Building about seventy-two thousand square feet. Entire parcels, two hundred and six thousand square feet or four point seven acres. They are giving up about eighty-seven hundred uh, square feet. Of land for the improvements in the intersection. That's been given up by the owner. Um, and not seeking compensation, which he doesn't have a right to do, except giving that up without seeking compensation. Again, we're just trying to develop. We originally had this in the back corner, and after listening to. Comments from the planning commission, we decided to move it down a little bit and utilize the back, have access to the rear of the property. Um, move it a little bit off of where the school is and and stuff like that, so. That's because of the sketch plan, it's conceptual, and uh, that's what we look to do. Um. The building itself, about eighty thousand square feet or so, it's not exactly. Yep. Full plan, so we're just looking at approximately eighty thousand square feet. We increased the parking. We added some parking in front of the side, so it exceeds any parking that was uh, would be required. Um, we're outside of the flood conservation overlay. Down in the lower part of the building, or in the lot. So, one thing that we asked is consider either a zoning change or a text amendment change. And really looking at um, the project. And the zoning and the comments from the planning commission, I don't think that a zoning change would be appropriate, but do believe that we'd like to. Consider a text amendment change to do two things. One is to add. Nursing and residential care facilities as a permitted conditional use. Um, nursing care facilities themselves are already permitted in the business office and thus institutional zoning class. And just to 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 change this, to allow this project to be permitted as a conditional use rather than require variance. And to increase the maximum rated lot coverage from sixty percent to eighty percent. Um, in order to get the required parking. I really think that it's overparked as it is. I mean, there's never anybody in the lot, but the parking's required. Under the ordinance, so. It's as though the ordinance doesn't seem to take into account the actual number of people that drive and park at the facility now. Um, so those are two text amendment changes that we would propose and like to be considered if there's support to move ahead with this um, project. Our planner's going to talk about the demand for senior housing and. I believe this is an appropriate use. Again, it it would not. Add any school students or anything like that to the township, and we utilize. And add to the tax base of the township by adding a significant building on what is otherwise vacant ground. So, uh, and the owner can testify about the issue with trying to lease out the office building. Office building demand is down. Um, you know, he's got about seventy percent of the building leased, but even the part that's leased, the people don't come into work every day. So they get three days a week, two days a week, so. It just doesn't lead to a whole lot of people utilizing the facility. Again, I, the Google Earth, I handed up the, just so you can get a better understanding of where this project is in terms of the lot and and uh. Underutilized part of the lot. And again, just to move the building down, that's what we did to revise sketch plan, just move the building down off the property line, allow circulation around the building.
If you don't mind me interrupting.
Yes.
Um, I mean, we're kind of proceeding with the presumption that everybody that's in the room tonight is at the planning commission. Could you, may maybe, maybe somebody else was gonna explain this. Could, could you just talk a little bit about high level, what the project is?
Sure.
What, what, how tall is it gonna be? What are you proposing to put in there? Are we trying, are we talking about doing something different with the existing building? Maybe just give us the, give us the Google Earth. There's a lot of people that 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 aren't as familiar with this project as what you.
And they weren't here for the last one. Okay, the office building's owner remained an office building. No change to the office building. No change in use, maybe in tenant or something, but no change in basic uses in office building. This is a new proposed facility, like I said, an eighty thousand square foot building to have an assisted living facility, fifty-five and over. Continuing, continuum of care, um. In that building, and Manny can talk about the number of of beds or residents, um. You know, that he proposes.
Say, good evening, everyone. Hi, um, my name's Manny Mathai. I'm up here next door, next door neighbor. So everybody know Philmont Avenue, twenty-six hundred Philmont Avenue. And uh, the, when I bought the building, it was uh, uh, the vacancy was low. But you know, we tried to arrange if we can fill it out, a certain number of people, we did, maybe ten percent. But the land is uh, still so much property, so much uh, uh, vacancy. So it is not a suitable when we have all this land. So we, uh, I'm a healthcare provider. And uh, we decided if. The township agree, and we put a assisted living facility, which is uh, for seniors. Uh, it does have assisted living and memory care. And uh, independent living and personal care. Uh, with a, a very nice uh, vision of uh, taking care of seniors. Uh, with the state licensed. That is the uh, uh, the building we propose.
And Manny just completed a similar project in Bristol Borough, Bucks County. So he's done this, he's been involved in home healthcare business for a long time, so he's got experience in this type of um.
How long have you worked in?
Uh, eight years.
Eight years?
Yeah, yeah, since two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Six years.
Six years, sorry.
It's okay. Is there a name of the facility in Bristol?
Yeah, Angel Star, assisted living.
Angels?
Angel Star.
Oh, wow.
This is the same Angel Star assisted living.
Is, is that facility, does that have a similar sort of relationship with a, with an office park? Was it built on a property similar to that? Or is it, is it just that?
The uh, Bristol, that was a hospital. Delaware Valley Memorial Hospital. We bought it, we changed to uh, assisted living, same, same. Same thing.
Well, it's a stable on middle.
Yeah, it's not, it's not next to a, it's a converting hospital.
With eighty thousand square feet, what, how many rooms? What's, what are your expectations there?
Well, we were thinking, plus or minus eighty thousand, we were uh, thinking uh, maybe hundred and sixty units. That's where we have under sixty.
What, sixty?
Yeah, yes.
So maybe a combination of like apartments and then smaller rooms to name it, so care.
There were some uh, uh, doubles, some uh, uh, singles and some uh, studios. You know, depending on uh, how, or the handicap rooms and how they want. They stayed that hour, whatever stayed that hour.
That's, you said three stories?
Four, four stories.
Is that how tall the office building is?
It fits in with the high requirement. I can't remember exactly how tall it is, but it's within the high requirement.
Why wouldn't you convert the existing building into the assisted living and not build a brand-new building?
Because the fundamentals, they built this nada. Because that's a concrete building, so layout, layout, it's not a accurate to change. And that's what's gonna do. Yeah, because it's a concrete building, it is not able to cut. To make it fit out for that uh, assisted living right now.
Just want to ask uh, Brian Curry, our planner, to speak a little as well about.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to say. Yeah, can I ask Mr. Rick a question?
Yeah, sure.
How would you handle the memory care section in a building like this? Would that be on like a separate wing or?
Yeah, that's, it's a, because we're going to designate. Or the half of the floor for memory care with the lot, because they cannot escape. So they will uh, make a special arrangement in the top floor. Select a secure elevator, secure numbers, secure alarms.
What I did want to do was have Sir Curry speak a little bit about the uses and see the impacts on the community as well as he's a planner.
Great, yeah, thank you. Um, and yeah, so you know, our, our approach to this was really. Taking a step back and thinking about this proposed development through a land use and sort of planning perspective. Um, and you know, framing it from a land use perspective, uh, thinking about um, sort of contributions to the community as a whole. Thinking about what are those fiscal benefits, what are the economic benefits? Uh, and then sort of thinking about what are the costs and what are sort of the impacts to uh, the school, the, the schools um, in particular. Uh, but then also thinking about the compatibility with surrounding uh, uses, you know, same height, uh, four stories. And then also thinking about the whole corridor uh, as its own uh, district. Um, you know, looking at the zoning map, we don't have it available here, but uh, most of the, the Philmont corridor is a mixed-use revitalization zone. Which allows for a mix of uses, uh, including residential uses. Um, and throughout the corridor, you're seeing a lot of different, this sort of mix of uses contributing to the tax base. Uh, in this case, this particular uh, uh, parcel is zoned uh, office uh, institutional district. Which does not allow residential uses, primarily office, but uh, you know, since there was an existing office building there, that's been there for several decades. Um, it does allow the uh, sort of nursing care facility. So, you know, similar to what is proposed, but a zoning change, whether a text amendment to this zone is needed. Or a rezoning, uh, given the consistency of of uh, zoning throughout uh, the corridor. Um, and so, you know, thinking too about, sort of in this post-COVID world about office in particular. That, you know, there is some uh, uncertainty about sort of suburban class B Cs, or not your big fancy new class A office buildings. But a B C building uh, that already has some healthcare tenants in there. And thinking about synergies with another development to then help. Help the marketability of the office development, especially for healthcare providers. The risk is, you know. The risk is, you know, and this is not just here, this is all over, that if you have declining uh vacancy in office, you have a declining assessment. You have declining tax base, and this is something that. You know, communities throughout the region, including Philadelphia nationally, are dealing with this. And so this is a way to sort of uh enhance the marketability of the office space. But then also uh add additional tax base with this sort of. Full utilization of the site. You know, the other piece is just thinking about uh, you know, housing diversification. Obviously, there's other uh senior uh facilities. Uh nearby, so that that's compatible, but also um you know, this is consistent with other plans uh in the region and and the county. In supporting uh diversification of housing, multi-generational housing, especially well located, that is in a walkable area. Access to the greenway. Um you know, just looking at within a fifteen minute drive time of the site. Based on uh ESRI data, which is sort of uh you know, derived from census and ACS data. Uh in the last, since twenty ten, uh there the total population has increased by six percent. The population of sixty five and older has increased by twenty seven percent, adding nearly fourteen thousand uh that are now sixty five and older. And and not that, you know, if you're sixty five and older, you're you're going to move to a facility like this, but uh you know, over time, more and more. Um adults are going to need this type of care. They're going to want to stay in their communities. Um the other, you know, important thing to consider is that um of households. That are living within a fifteen minute drive, those who are age sixty five and older, seventy percent are homeowners. Uh so eventually you get to an age where where else you're going to live, you're going to have, you know, you're 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 going to need to to live in a place without stairs, all these other conditions. Considerations, uh you know, the the rental supply is is sort of not available. Uh you know, for those, and they would have to potentially move outside the community. So this is sort of building that supply of uh age restricted age. You know, appropriate housing for for an aging population. What is the uh what is the mix of the existing office building there? Like what what type of businesses are in there?
Some doctors, major doctors, surgeons, dentists. And some accounting offices, mainly healthcare. More.
What is your current occupancy rate on the building?
About sixty two percent.
You were recently trying to sell this property, correct?
Because of the census. Yeah, that's what it is. It's just. We need to uh we try everything to you to bring the people in. So I don't want to sell it. I'm here. Only reason because uh we want to make sure we're busy, you know? Because it's got a, it got a bit taxed, we're working this, and I'm hard to find those things, you know?
Unless there's, I mean, I just to move it along a little bit, I do want to have a chance to have, you know, the township engineer uh may may comment. We'll know if we're two, it's still here, if they would like. Uh township engineer, Tim Woodrow, would you just provide a summary of your memo and?
Mister, I'd be happy to. Um at the planning commission, I really challenged our folks to look away from a plan. And think more about a number of properties within our community where the the long term viability is maybe. Eroting. We have a property up at County Line and I'm complaining they're talking to us about. There's others along, coming out of the corridor. So this is just one of several properties that are seeking to look for new additional uses. And so I think our charge as your professionals and your charge as the elected bodies making decisions. Is what do we want to see occur on these properties that are perhaps in 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 the waning years of other really. Economic viability. And I think this is a question we're going to be facing more and more as time evolves and 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 so I don't think this is the last time we'll see this kind of proposal. Uh and I do think that we need to think carefully about what we want to see. On properties like this, where there is available real estate, where perhaps a zoning change or text amendment might be viable. Uh I I I'm not sure what is different, or maybe they are exactly the same. Crescent Fields and this facility, is it the same facility? Is the same purpose, right? So it's the same. Same type of 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 operation, uh providing those kind of services. And I guess our question is, is that something we think we need to see a little more of? Is is there capacity in our community for another building like Crescent Fields? Uh and I think that's what we've got to deliberate upon and and think about. If the conclusion of the board is, yeah, this is a good idea, you can give then direction to staff to kind of find a path to make it happen. Then we can talk about densities and plans and parking and all those kinds of things. But I think the first question to the board is, is this something we want to see more of?
Yeah, I guess from from my perspective, I one of the previous mentioned that. Um that there wasn't, uh you know, I guess it was a light marketing study that that there was a need for additional senior housing. Whether it's assistic care that 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 we're that we're seeing that and. I I guess my my question for the engineer is. You know, conceptually, putting a building like this, I I think someone said, you know, going from sixty percent to eighty percent lot coverage. Do you foresee any significant, you know, implications or things that would be difficult to work around? Uh based on adding an eighty, you know, thousand four story uh you know, building there?
I think the answer, Dennis, is yes. The path forward is complicated. From a design and permitting perspective, stormwater runoff is obviously a a critical component to any future application. But that will be a burden borne by the developer. You know, we've got a pretty uh robust ordinance, obviously. Uh state through their N P P E S permit process has another, again, threshold level of review. Uh there will be more stormwater management on the system tomorrow than there is today. Today there is none. Uh certainly when approaching a new project like this. If you recall, other redevelopment projects, there is almost a a tax, stormwater tax that the D E P imposes. And so there will be, you know, again incremental, but there will be stormwater improvements at that intersection and experience. If this project is 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 completed. Uh and again, that is a cost component of. Manny's performance that we need to be aware of. But uh you know, if this plan goes ahead, there's going to be underground detention basins. There's going to be some kind of hybrid. Maybe unique stormwater management infrastructure that that will be a little more the exotic side rather than more traditions.
Does the entire. Parcel. Will the entire parcel be required to upgrade their stormwater management or test?
Well, we're setting what the D E P describes as a limit of disturbance. And so if the proposal is to add new.
Unless they agree otherwise. Right? Unless the landlord agrees to pick up.
Do more, right, exactly.
I mean, that's that's the black and white, but there's always more.
Right, but I'm just, I was going to say that.
B E T, there was a lot more.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Okay, there's also significant earth disturbance throughout the entire site proposed with this. I mean, this is all new, all new. So there would be significant stormwater management required.
Yeah.
And it's bare minimum. There's none there now. There's none there.
And the significant stormwater management that would be required would probably be quite expensive.
Yes.
So when you're looking at this, you're probably talking about high end. Assisted living, high end memory care, high end independent living, correct?
Yes.
I think one of the studies said it would be similar to Paul, like a Paul's Run example. So um do I? Do you have any outdoor um, you know, porches or spaces like that you're going to think about? I mean, I know sketch is very rough, you know, to propose, you know. You know, for the residents, because it looks like you have some green space available.
We propose some, part of it depends upon how much parking is actually going to be required. One of the concerns, planning commission reasons, oh, you don't want parking. Don't believe like, so they max out the parking. And that takes away some of the green space, but yes, there would be those kind of amenities, because you're going to need these, probably something about having a swimming pool. I mean, it's all in the state of flux. It's just a sketch.
So whether this pool's inside or outside, whatever, all that can be worked out as if things evolve forward. Also, just not, you know, I mean, looking at this, there's a number of trees that are coming out.
Right.
You will plan on, you know, I mean, we have. You know, put back in.
Yes.
But you're. Interested in.
Absolutely.
Planting.
Plantings, yeah, everything runs into to conflict. Well, you have there's so many parking spaces. Well, if you have all these parking spaces which you. Need, at least it doesn't show that they're needed now. Less parking, the less impervious coverage, the better off it is and the more green space you can have.
So our water management that will have to be done or required for this project will move that intersection, because we put floodgates there. We know that's a bad spot.
Yeah, Joe, the answer is yes. But will it be noticeable? Probably not. You know, given the size of the watershed, it drains from, you know, all points. County line road and whatever's the watershed to the Hightower Valley Creek. You know, fixing one eight acre parcel. Compared to, you know, the square mile of watershed. That much of which was developed very similar to Fairwood Plaza before stormwater management was really an obligation. And so every time we have a chance to add stormwater management where it does not exist today. Is going to make some incremental improvement to flooding of someone out of it. I don't think it's going to be measurable. But again, in in many storm events, perhaps it will flood as quickly as it does today.
Will still install the floodgates.
So I just wanted to make a quick.
Would, instead of adding another building, that would. Uh you mentioned you can pre-purpose the current office building, but maybe you consider kind of demolish that building and build there instead. I'm I'm just, I'm just wondering if you thought about that, if you considered it, if that's a, if that's a possibility, rather than seeking. You know, the relief you guys might be seeking to do this, where you would be able to operate with either within an existing zoning. Or without, again, increasing lots lot size by by that I've mentioned. Okay, just to um, I don't know, Sue, if you'd like to make any comments and share your works briefly, then.
Go ahead and make your comments first. I'll I'll mine.
Right, our letter has basically two themes. One is, how is the zoning going to be addressed? Will it be a text amendment or a rezoning? Um there was a. Uh report in my packet from E S I that talked about the building height at fifty feet. Which meets the current zoning, but not the M U R E V zoning. Um so a lot of our questions had to do with how is it going to proceed as far as the property being zoned? And the other was, there is uh planning studies that have been done for connectivity, including the Philmon Avenue corridor study. That highlights this particular parcel to have a walking trail around it and connectivity to uh. The adjoining streets, so we would like to see as the plan moves forward. Uh those plans be addressed and the walking trails be addressed. And that's pretty much the the summary of what we were were looking at.
Okay, thanks.
Can I make a quick comment?
Please.
So, looking at this project as a whole, I'm actually in favor of it. The fifty five plus is a great basis for us. Because it gives us increased tax revenue with no demand on the school whatsoever, which is great help. The size being a hundred and sixty units, I have serious concerns when it comes to the emergency services. And what they may do to tax our system, we would have to work something out with the developer on that due to the increased volume in E M S. Reviewing Fire Marshal Shally's uh note, I agree with him wholeheartedly. There needs to be three sixty access to this building. And I understand this is a sketch. I believe it's a great concept and something, if developed correctly, that I would definitely be in favor of.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Yeah, yes, uh uh you do you want to make your comments or? I just wanted, I just think that if this project does go through or further, which would be to sit down with the developer and the builder. And have a face to face to explain the fire code, some of our strategy and tactics of what we need on this type of building. This makes things easier if we talk face to face then.
Just just a couple. Just practical question. So this is a hundred and sixty proposed units. How many are at your Bristol facility? Hundred sixty eight?
Yeah.
Okay. And you said it's going to be similar to Crescent Fields. Now they have a, on the first floor, like a main street. Uh restaurant, eating place, post office. Uh hair person. I mean, do you have that?
Say, say, we have, when you do a senior care, we make sure, we make sure that we have enough. They have enough comfort. They don't have to go outside. Everything we set up in that particular building, that's exactly what I did in a Bristol building. They have a hair salon and they have uh. At daycare, uh Bristol building, we're doing a dialysis unit. We don't need that here. And we have rehab, we have a home care, we have a clinic. So when they sick, they can see the doctors, the doctors in charge. And uh they have a speech therapist, occupational therapist, uh everybody on uh is at site.
What's the average age of the residents here?
It's sixty five plus.
Sixty five plus?
Yeah.
Because Crescent Fields is eighty three.
Um we you never know when we're getting.
They're not, they're not driving Crescent Field.
No, no, this is safe. This is the, we must have, even though I say somebody who is sick, they wanted to be there. They are not a little bit driving.
One other, one other, one other comment though, with the building. Some of the ancillary services would probably also be in this building.
Yeah, that that I was wondering.
That's why we, that's why this even has a connection between the two, because it makes sense. Got the building, you've got space there. That helps, that helps support this building as well. So, you know, you'll have some of the. Things in the neighborhood building.
And how many beds does Crescent Field have?
One.
I think one ninety eight.
One ninety eight.
How many calls am I off that we get from Crescent Fields? Do we know that number?
Fifteen, yes, well.
Yeah, eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve. I think Mark's going to give you a direct answer.
Last or total for the year, a hundred and thirty nine. Called Crescent Field uh monthless month fifteen. I do believe when that was developed, they also made a specific payment. To the township as part of the development for.
Re-conditional use decision and the land development decision. So all of those conditions are in there, and you can see what what the concern is.
Oh, no, that's why I read it. That's why I did read them, and that's why I was saying there was specific payments made in anticipation of a. Extra costs for public safety and those kind of things when that was developed. All right, so that was taken into account.
I just have one one more question. I just wanted to ask, um for the building you have in Bristol, are you able to comment on? How many people from that community are are residents of the of this particular building?
Bristol building we just built.
It's not, not occupied, you know?
Just finished.
Okay, I I just wanted to bring up that, I think. You wanting to understand how much it actually draws from that community or draws people from the outside the community. Because I think wanting to have a place where people in the world can stay there is a nice idea, but I would want to. I I'd like to understand how that applies to other places then. You have worked with there that are similar to this, if that's actually the case. And I actually don't even know if that's the case with Crescent Fields or not. If they're largely lower the residents that have moved in there, or if there are people from outside the township that have have come to this place that now exists. Just a, just a.
I know that the Bristol Borough is a lower economic demographic as well.
Um what what if, if what I'd like to do, just to kind of wrap this up, is ask if there's any comments from the from the community, bits that are here, folks online. Then if there's any final comments from the board, then we'll we'll wrap this up. So. Well, no, is there any comments in the room or comments online? Any other lasting comments?
I I definitely. If as part of this, we asked you to have a full time. I mean, a physical therapist or somebody like a. There twenty four seven. To uh have somebody who can call if somebody just needs to get up off the floor. Instead of calling our nine one one services every time something happened.
No, this is a nursing service already there. We have a physical therapist is only. From uh eight A M. to eleven PM.
So what kind of calls are we getting from?
Oh, so usually this kind of places. I tell you, general.
Mm hmm.
Usually when they fall or seniors who have some kind of a heart failure or if they have emergency to go to a hospital, that time they have to call. Even even physical therapy, even there, it doesn't matter. They may not be helping that particular time.
Well, you're gonna have independent living, you said, in this as well.
Yes.
Will they have the capability to call your people if they have, you know, they slip?
They 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 probably independent living if they seriously fall.
Of course, not talking about serious falls. I want them to call nine one one if they're serious.
That's what it is.
But what but we get calls that are not necessarily serious calls, but because they don't know, because they don't know that there's anyone else there. And I probably shouldn't be saying this at all. So what's I'm following my theme tonight.
You asking the right question.
I mean, will there be somebody there to help people with a little stump?
Definitely. Definitely. Because there's a ratio you have to follow with this thing.
The ratio what?
Said how many patients, how many sick people, how many sick patients they have to have a nurse, whatever the ratio. CNA's or home care or whoever that would be, a attending supposed to be there.
I think I think we're getting into the nuance of the use, which whether or not it is a facility that is independent living, which would essentially function like a major restricted apartment compared to a facility that has nursing care available to some residents, all residents. And I think at this point I don't know that we're a hundred percent sure. So just to just to just to wrap this up at this point, and I don't know if there's any other comments, I just want to make one one last comment. You know, conceptually, you know, I I I'm in the in the the same place as Commissioner Canal. Conceptually, I think that it's 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 of interest. I think, you know, listening to all the comments from planners and and from the engineer as well as the rest of commissioners, I think there's some hurdles. There's some things that we'd like to see, but conceptually, they have some type of senior senior living facility that's now connected to make this other uh, building that's only sixty two percent occupied now to make it more marketable and viable. I think that, you know, it's conceptually right. I think you you have some work to do before you come back and see us, but you know what you're proposing, I think fits. I think there's some details that we have to work out around the zoning, whether it's a tax amendment and some of these other details, but conceptually, I would say yes from from my perspective, so.
I just want to say I'm in support of this sort of senior living facility in the community and as Joe and Dennis have uh, expressed, I do think, um, and looking at Fire Marshal Shally's report. Um, I'm concerned with regard to emergency services, um, the wrong way with of the to entrances, any access to the building. Um, again, as our partner marshal said, that would be a sit down, but it look, it seems like you're very willing to work with the township. Um, and um you know, or populationization. Um, and I will take a look at your building that you've built in Bristol, but I'm in support of um, something like this in that area, I think, um. You know, uh, retired uh residents, they shop, they like to have the breakfast and lunch and and walk around, so it'll it'll you know, you know, bring a new life into the community. And I've I've met many different residents from Crescent Fields, so there are some are from the community, there's some are outside the community.
Okay.
So that's my comment.
I think there's one more comment from.
Way back there.
Yeah. I can't see you back there.
The two buildings are going to work together. Would you consider taking the new building and moving it much closer so that the occupants don't have a sea of parking to traverse to get to the other building?
With what we revised and just presented tonight, as we formally presented, that we did that, we leave the building closer.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, we were just looking for guidance from the township as to whether you can head with more detailed plans.
I think the answer is, the answer is yes, conceptually. Thank you for for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda.
Thank you so much.
The next item on my agenda is to review and consider the consultant fee schedule. This agenda item is to amend chapter one eighty subdivision of land man of the land fee schedule. Municipal planning code includes rates for professional consultants for twenty twenty five. Rates are paid per professional services agreement with the developer or land development or resident or green permit. Rates are included in the package. Is there any discussion from the board that you'd like to have? The rate schedule was included in there and there are modest increases or minimal increase. Any comments? Joe, any?
No.
Uh, any comments in the public? Hearing no other comments, I'd like to make make a motion to approve resolution twenty four dash fifty seven establishing the township's consultant professional service rates for twenty twenty five. Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty four fifty seven establishing the township's consultant professional service rates for twenty twenty five. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Thank you, commissioners.
The next item on my agenda is review and consider the fee schedule uh resolution for electrical permits. The township electrical permit fee schedule was less set in twenty nineteen. The permit fee set by taking the inspection fee uh, schedule and multiplying it by a factor of one point three or thirty percent. Inspections are handled by United Inspection Agency and subcontractor Keystone Municipal Services. Keystone provides the rest of our inspection services when Keystone has, when when Keystone was appointed in twenty twelve. They finished the year with a fee schedule set by our old fee structure. Beginning in twenty thirteen, we changed the simple hourly rate to sixty dollars per hour, which was which remained for twenty nineteen. That rate was increased sixty five dollars an hour in twenty twenty through twenty twenty four. The propose, it it is proposed to go to seventy dollars an hour in twenty twenty five. Township's fee schedule is sufficient to cover these expenses. Uh, comparatively, the electrical permit uh schedule is generally a flat rate of service. United is proposing its first increase since twenty twenty, which then requires modifying the permit fee schedule. Thirty percent factor, which was determined, cover the township's administrative cost while keeping the permit fees in line with neighboring municipalities. It also guarantees that the permit fee will always cover our fees of uh, cover the fees owed to the inspector. So any questions from the board on on this speech schedule change?
No.
Anybody from the public or online? Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve those re- resolution number twenty four dash fifty eight setting the electrical fee schedule, the electrical permit fees as detailed in our package.
Thank you.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty four fifty eight setting electrical permit fees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Guys, I gotta head out for another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. No opposed. The motion's passed. Thank you, commissioners.
The next item on my agenda is to review the planning commission appointment and uh essentially this is just to advise the board that the term of the war for planning commission member Kurt Meyer is set to expire on February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Uh, and in between now and then, we're asking if there's any interest to participate in the commission. So it's just be, there's no vote at this time. It's just to let you know that it's expired. Next item on my agenda is the building efficiency report. I'd like to invite the enforcement uh uh, this week, month, Ted Middleton, to give us that report.
Good evening. Uh, we had eleven meetings with homeowners and contractors for the month. We had nine residential UNOs. We had three commercial UNOs. Uh, we were at court twice. Um, were property maintenance issues and work without permits. Uh, we, Joe and I attended a PASO meeting. That's the the Pennsylvania Association of Zoning Officials. We also attended the P Sats Fall Zoning Conference. Um and they had a bunch of information on updating ordinances and some legal issues with zoning hearing boards and a few things like that. Uh, we had sixty one permits for the month, a hundred and fifty inspections. Uh, we wrote four citations for property maintenance. Um, is there any questions?
Thank you for your hard work.
All right, thank you. Last item on my agenda is my liaison report and uh, the only thing that I I have to report on this particular month is Pennyback Ecological Restoration Trust will have their quarterly board meeting on December seventeenth. Uh, there was no meeting last month. It'll be quarterly, so I I have nothing to report from that. And that concludes my agenda items. And I return it to you, President Kurtz.
Thank you. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Halzen or Assistant Solicitor Halzen. We renamed, I've given you. I have a chair of public authority committee.
Okay, well, they have the veto thing for the Chapel Hill wastewater treatment plant clarifier rehabilitation project. Um, and they have decided for the low bidder being the Durstine Company of Saturday, PA. Um, with a base contract of three hundred and ninety five thousand and the alternate amount of fifty five thousand five hundred. We would like to to do both. Um, are there any questions up here about uh things that I probably can't answer, like what is a clarifier rehabilitation project? By public, any question? There are other people who can answer. Um, okay, well, then I'd like to make a motion to award the base contract in the amount of three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars and the alternate in the amount of fifty five thousand dollars to Durstine Company of Saturday, PA.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded to award the base contract in the amount of three hundred and ninety five thousand and the alternate amount, the alternate in the amount of fifty five thousand five hundred to Durstine Company of Saturday, PA. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, um. The next one is the township authority appointment. Colleen Malpezi, who has been sitting as our secretary for several years now. Um, her uh position as a board member for the Lowermore Township Authority is set to expire on January second. Given their meeting schedule and our meeting schedule, um, we'd like the board to consider reappointing uh Ms. Malpezi at this uh, at this meeting for a new five year term. Uh, our township manager, Christopher Hoffman, and I myself both recommend Colleen Malpezi very. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Anybody from the public have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty four dash fifty nine, reappointing Colleen Malpezi to a new five year term on the Lowermore Township Authority commencing January third.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty four fifty nine, reappointing Colleen Malpezi to a new five year term on the Lowermore Township Authority, as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Thank you. Motion's passed.
Um, my liaisons are the Lowermore Township Authority, which we just covered somewhat in our wooden board on um, um, the Capitol Hill plants and then also on on the individual stations that need renovation. If that's what you feel. Um, and then my historical architectural review board uh, did not meet this month in an official capacity. We did, however, have a plaque project which I brought forward in this meeting before, um, but what it is, is we are going to identify historical properties, do the research and then offer them a plaque on there. And hopefully it will cause to the township. Um don't worry, we don't have to talk about the others.
This building qualify?
Is it sound according to code?
No, um, we are focusing on houses that were on the nineteen seventeen map.
Yeah.
And earlier. Okay, yeah, so at least a hundred years old, but actually most of them are slightly older. And are the first area that we're going to do is probably the majority of the houses along Huntington Pike that are now businesses. It's easy pickings. So we figure might as well do those first and move from there. Uh, does anybody have any questions? We're having a lot of fun. If anybody wants to join us in our in our you know, quest to research and find those old uh, historical records. Okay, well, that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Halzen, and thank you and your husband, Mike, for spearheading this with this story and Richard Moore.
I'm in charge.
I know, I said you spearheaded this and um, it's very appreciated. Next chair recognizes Sean Blanton, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, President Kurtz. Uh, my first agenda item is to uh read out the zoning hearing board summary. Uh, so the zoning hearing board will meet next Thursday, uh, December nineteenth, uh, and I want to call out their meeting at six PM rather than the normal time at seven PM. Uh, that's due to the fact that there are eight applications on the December uh agenda for the zoning hearing board, uh, which I will go through right now. First is the application number twenty four dash thirty four. This is the application of Ahmed Ramazan or Ramazan, excuse me, of six twelve Brisa Drive. They're seeking a variance to allow a six foot high solid fence in their front yard where four feet and fifty percent open is permitted. Uh, the second application is application number twenty four dash thirty five. This is the application of Michael Neto of twenty three seventy two Boyd Road. They seek variances to allow construction of a one thousand square foot addition on the side and rear of their home, which will extend an existing nonperforming setback horizontally and exceed the twenty five percent lock coverage. Application number twenty four dash thirty six is the application of Driton and Susan Columbia of five, excuse me, four five six Andrew Road. They're seeking variances to permit construction of a one story addition within the front yard. Uh, the variances are sought to reduce the front yard setback from fifty feet to forty two feet and eight inches to increase the lock coverage from twenty five percent to thirty point seven percent and to expand a nonperforming building. The fourth application is application number twenty four dash thirty seven. This is the application of Alex and Anna Mapati of seven twenty Lisa Circle. They seek a variance to allow construction of an in ground swimming pool, which would exceed the permitted lock coverage of twenty five percent. Their existing lock coverage is already thirty one point nine percent and they seek to increase it to thirty six percent. The the next application is application number thirty four dash thirty eight. This is the application of Anton and Victoria Kaminsky of seventeen twenty one Reading Road. They also seek a variance to allow construction of an in ground swimming pool within the rear setback that would reduce the required ten foot setback to three feet and six inches. Application number twenty four dash thirty nine is the application of Ming Huang Zhang of thirty seven thirty six Pine Road. They're seeking variances for a second driveway, which has already been constructed. The driveway increases the lock coverage from thirty three point one four percent to forty percent, where twenty five percent is permitted. Seventh application is application number twenty four dash thirty three. This is the continuation of the Tomson Center LLC, seventy eight Tomson Road. They're seeking a variance to allow a parking reduction from the required twenty nine parking spaces. And finally, application number twenty four dash forty is the application of Robert and Lona Sticke of for excuse me, T M P forty one dash zero 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 seven, six nine zero zero nine. This is a vacant lot on Randolph with no address. They are seeking variances to prevent construction of a single family detached dwelling. These variances are from the floodplain conservation district ordinance. Uh, and we received a review letter from Engineer Woodrow uh on that application. And so I would ask, uh, Engineer Woodrow, is anything you wanted to comment on specifically with that particular application?
Yeah, Sean, certainly our ordinance um, make sure that we pay special attention to anyone that wants to build a new home in the flood. And uh, we were going back and forth quite a bit with the applicant and their engineer and their attorney as to what the relief necessary was. And so I thought I would bring some clarity to that conversation by doing a pretty thorough point by point review of the code versus their application. Um, our ordinance um, does not encourage development in the floodplains, but it doesn't prohibit it either. Um, a crucial is that they are proposing to build the living space, so their furnishings and fittings and electrical and HVAC equipment will be elevated at least one and a half feet above what FEMA regulates as the flood height for that area. But I do want to make sure that what they really uh doesn't adversely impact adjacent properties by either damming water or not allowing for the flow of water through that area. Uh, I do want to make sure that they kind of acknowledge the impact of the floodway as opposed to the floodplain fringe, uh, as it impacts the Philmon Avenue property, which is also adjacent and kind of part of the application. So as long as all of those things are properly addressed with the zoning hearing board and then before us for a building permit. Uh, I just want to make sure that we are indeed.
I just want to make sure that we are indeed paying enough attention to the proposal.
Thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions from the rest of the board on any of the applications for the December meeting?
Uh, application twenty-four thirty-nine, thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road, that's a house that had the in-law suite added. And then they added the driveway without permission. So, whatever happened with, maybe Co can answer, whatever happened with that?
With the in-law suite, after it was denied, they just opened it up and it's one big house now.
Okay, so, uh, when they go back in front, since they're going to have a forty percent lock coverage, then I guess they'll make them do some type of seepage bed or stormwater management?
Joe, oftentimes the zoning hearing board, when faced with an application for increasing impervious cover over what they were, despite otherwise, well, will impose a condition that would need to provide for stormwater management, uh, to compensate for that overage. So, yes, typically that is what they would decide or place as a condition of approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, do we want, I mean, I don't think that's good enough.
The driveway's in, it's done, it's right across from the school.
We should make them tear it up. First of all, they did it without permission. Secondly, it does increase the lock coverage above what they did. I mean, what they had to do interior to the house is small compared to this incredible tampering in such a public way, where they essentially, you know, snubbed their nose at us. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I just think that we should, um, say no to this, you know, recommend that the commissioners, the commissioners recommend that we say no to that implication. Just my personal opinion. Um, I also think that we should recommend we say no to application twenty-four dash forty, um, where they want to build on that Randolph Street address. There's nothing there now. There's already tremendous problems, both on their property and the surrounding properties. Adding anything there, no matter how much they, I don't think they can add enough stormwater stuff in an individual house to make it worth their while and our while to have another property. Did I make any sense?
No, yes you did, because I don't think, they don't have the room. It's such a small property.
I don't think that there's anything that they can.
And it's a concern.
To make it right. So, I would, I would suggest that we, as the board, recommend we say no to application twenty-four thirty-nine and twenty-four forty.
Uh, before we say anything, can I invite either Ted or Joe, do either one of you want to comment on? Either the chair, is there anything that, any information you, you think would be relevant to share before we make a decision about that? On either application, we'll start with the one on Pine Road.
The one on Pine Road, um, they still have not done any type of access out onto the road. So, they're still driving over a curb and the sidewalks. So, they never even put in the correct driveway apron.
Yeah, so.
And that home runs on pine, in order to get that curb to be approved, is that a HOP?
That's a pen dot, yeah.
Yes.
And historically, we, the last time that, that property was up, President, we did comment on, on what they were trying to do.
So, the process is the HOP first and then they will come in front of us and then get the driveway proof.
A part of the curving process would be they'd have to have a front and, uh, sometimes they don't care and they just say it's a minor opening. And then they'll just do like what, our standards and pen dots are usually pretty close and what that equated activity and, um, all of that. But they would have to have some kind of that.
Even within the schools or the high-traffic area.
Yeah, usually minor stuff like that, we find that they are usually okay with it.
Joe, but the first step would be the zoning application. You've got to clear the zoning hurdle before the other approvals and permits can be pursued.
Right, so even hypothetically, if they got the zoning relief, but then didn't design the driveway connection to pen dot standards, that doesn't allow them to put it in until they have the order. That, that's their order of operation.
And if they take out the pen dot, then they'd have to rip up the driveway because you can't drive without an apron.
Well, you're already doing it that way.
I guess procedure would be, what's gonna be the next, I mean, with Ruth's proposal.
Well, right now, what's in front of us, listener Rice and I just had a very short side talk, is first, if we want to take that, that one, twenty, the application twenty-four thirty-nine, which is.
Thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road.
Thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road regarding the driveway and the curving and no access onto the road. Um, when we, we could go either way, leave it in the hands of the zoning hearing board or send Solicitor Rice's office to oppose it. So.
Or send a letter to the zoning hearing board with the board's position on it. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's an increase of impervious surface, which is already done. Right, so if they deny it, technically then they've got to tear it up.
Correct.
Which they won't do, which means we'll end up going to county court because an abnormal violation of zoning hearing was decided. So, it'll take that route and it could take months.
Right, okay. Or, what's your word?
Go in that route.
Yeah. The better.
I think might be more going because they did, once they got this now for the in-law suite, come in and we worked with them and they did do what we needed inside. They were not argumentative after they lost. But they took down walls, they did all of that.
The driveway needs a pen dot permit too.
Yeah.
Yes, and they're still using it.
The driving over curb, he said.
Well, it's a curve bend.
There's no other driveway to get into this.
No, there's a huge driveway in the other.
It was a dentist's office. They added a second driveway to the left of the house.
Yeah. They communicated they needed additional access to it, given the, the way that it's.
Of course, they added an in-law suite, but they weren't supposed to.
Okay, so we have three options.
I agree with Ruth.
You know, I, I.
I support Ruth.
I do too. I, I think that is the way to go. So, do we want to vote on that? Um, it would be application twenty-four thirty-nine, uh, thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road, um, to.
Oppose the grant of the, of the variance to increase the impervious.
To increase the impervious.
And zoning hearing board doesn't have the power to do it, but the implication would be when you oppose it is you need to tear it up and restore.
Yeah. And will we also send someone from your office too?
Yeah, you should.
And send Solicitor Rice, someone from Solicitor Rice's office to the hearing. I'll make that motion. Is anyone, that's a motion. Is there a second? Second, okay, the motion was, uh, moved and seconded to deny and send one, send someone from Solicitor Rice's office to oppose application twenty-four thirty-nine, which is thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road to the zoning hearing board on December nineteenth at six, eight AM for this application. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, there's no seconds.
Okay, the second one is.
Application number twenty-four dash forty. Uh, so this was the, uh, the currently vacant lot on the program. So, uh, Rick, I heard you correctly, you would like to move a, you would like to raise a assembly motion to, to get a letter in opposition of, of the assembly. Is there any discussion on the board? Anyone have any?
I agree.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll do that. I'll raise a motion to send a letter.
Yeah, just a little more information.
Sure.
They've already been to the zoning hearing board, right? And they were given permission.
And for a lot size.
For lots size, so they've got variances for that. And the, Tim and I have been talking about this property. Problem is, these are non-conforming lots, right? And, um, I guess the zoning hearing board is usually relatively, um, they listen to people that have non-conforming lots because.
They feel like if they say no, then basically they're renting their property useless.
Right, and provided that they otherwise meet all of the remaining zoning regulations.
Right, that's the purpose.
Right, so that, that's a little different, but, um, I know Tim's concerned about building a floodplain. So, if you want to oppose the variance, that, I mean, that, that's fine. I think that if they want to pursue an appeal or something, we're not on as strong grounds because of the fact of you have non-conforming lots. And they're protected under Pennsylvania law.
Yeah, it was brought up last time that if, they would otherwise have no use for this land and that is, that is something that, those aren't people who recognize that they wouldn't.
It's a backyard for the house on Philmon.
Right.
They've been using it to park there, right?
Correct.
But anyway, it's a little different situation and, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, my opinion on this would be, I don't know if we need to get involved at this stage. There seems to be a lot of, a lot of things need to happen or to make this happen. Tim's already been involved and he's looked at it and provided direction. Uh, I don't know if we have to explicitly stand in opposition of this for purposes of making sure that they don't develop there. I don't know if that's the right thing for us to do at this stage.
You think that the hurdles will be too big in order?
I mean, I think that if, even if the zoning hearing board decides to grant them the relief, they still have to meet all the conditions in order to build there. And if they can't meet those conditions, then they won't build there.
Yeah.
And so the, the process can handle it being built the way it needs to be built to, to manage flood, the floodplain and be in that, that place effectively.
May not be worthwhile. You know, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
You're okay with that, sir?
Cool. So, if there's no other questions about the upcoming, uh, zoning hearing board meeting, um, the report on the November meeting is really short. There was none, uh, twenty-four. That third year was continued, so there was no decisions to report on. Um, which brings me to the end of my report, um, as my liaison positions are closing in for, and we spoke about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanton. Next chair recognizes Joe Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee. Yeah, turn it over to Mr. Steve Porter.
I'll speak a couple of things. Uh, leave collection is that progression will be done this week, but we will definitely send you stuff out before you find these stacks files on board. Um, Public Works is set at kind of stormwater training with some best, um, good housekeeping, uh, processes, especially with the deal resolved. It's a good idea. The playground in Ridgeway, the storm is supposed to be in this week. It's weather delays. So, we're looking at it next week, but as soon as I get the firm date, um, for the show on those.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you. My name is on position HBA. Um, basketball is just starting up in-house and travel seasons are going to be starting in the next couple of weeks. And, uh, there's nothing really else exciting going on there right now. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, wish you peace. Um, one quick, quick item on my agenda. I forgot to highlight our lower moreland township event. To let everyone know that Lee and I have been working diligently and all our events are scheduled for, for the fall, fall and spring. So, just, I'll just highlight January, which January twentieth is our Martin Luther King Day event with Principal Miles and the Laurelmore High School students, the Public Works Department and any community volunteers that would like to join us. It'll be a park cleanup and, uh, playground chipping and our location will be to be determined. Um, it might work out at Ridgeway, so, and that'll be a great day. Um, so, just in April, we have the egg hunt, the Earth Day and event, and also, uh, Pine Road, visiting the township and Laurelmore Police Department. So, we're, we should be all set and ready to go. So, with that being said, sorry I missed that, but, um, I will open up our agenda items. This concludes our agenda items for this evening. And if there's any public participation from anyone in the room, if they'd like to address the board for any non-agenda items, please let us know.
Uh, just to call our present attention, I'm sorry, Lock Ground twenty-five fifty-nine, Pennyback Lane, Lowermore Township, Pennsylvania. Steve and I both attended on Zoom the pre-construction meeting for the Pennyback Bridge. Part of it was like watching paint dry and there was a lot of numbers, but that project is now taking a formal step. The bridge, cool.
Mr. George.
Yeah, this is on a lighter note, but in regards to the last meeting with the lady from Ann Street with the cats. Uh, it was heartbreaking hearing all of that. I, the very next day, I, uh, started checking ordinances. And if you go to the lower moreland, uh, ordinances and, and you put in the search box cat, it's not covered whatsoever. They don't even mention it. That's where the township is handicapped with handling any of this. I immediately found Upper Moreland and Abington that have very strong ordinances for furrow cats. So, I'm just encouraging somebody up here, all you would have to do, I, uh, I believe they have animal control also. They do, correct, which we'd all.
And the state of Pennsylvania has a, uh, they passed it, I think it was twenty-ten. I was telling Joe, I'll send it up to the board and I'll send the solicitor. It's a catch, neuter, release. They actually en-encourage that, so, um, so, just to let you know, Mr. D. George, and Solicitor Rice can explain it a little bit, we did, we do have an ordinance that covers all animals. And we did ask Solicitor Rice to take a look at what we have in place and to strengthen it up.
Listen, it is heartbreaking and we're all concerned with it and we're doing, we're working in the background, we're trying to fix it. I get calls and texts, bail. Trust me, that's what I tell you. So, we're trying to make it right.
Yeah, but again, uh, you know more than I do, but look at the upper moreland, it's stunning.
We haven't, we haven't.
We have, we know.
We haven't, yeah, we're all over.
Okay, yeah, we are working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. For your comment. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.